To the United States of America and to the mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. Mr. Trustee Pelkey, is there anybody on that sheet right there?
No, there isn't, Mr. President.
No, okay, thank you. Usually I open the meeting to the public. Trustee Pelkey has indicated to me that there is nobody who's signed up to address the board this evening, so we'll skip the open to the public and we'll go to adopting the minutes of the July 5th, 2002 regular meeting. All the board members have been provided with that. Does anybody have any deletions or anything they want to add or say about those minutes? If not, then I like a motion to accept those.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The bills, Deputy Treasurer, Becky Pelkey tonight?
I have two additions. The first one is business card for fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. The second one is New York Power Authority for twenty-six thousand, six hundred, seven dollars and one cent. And there's one deletion. And that's High Line Utility for eighty dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay. Any questions on the bills? If not, I need a motion to accept those bills.
Make a motion to accept the bills. Second.
All those in favor accepting the bills?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, bills are accepted. Before I go any further, Mr. Administrator, could you take a roll call vote or roll call attendance, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Pelkey?
Here.
Trustee Bernard?
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Here.
Trustee Arnold?
Brother.
Mayor LaBalle.
Here, thank you. Correspondents, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, so a couple of correspondence that I have today is I've received an email from Ian over at the library. And Ian has asked that the Friends of the Ross's Point Dodge Memorial Library would like to install a little free library. And it was purchased with a generous donation from the American Legion and the Ross's Point Champlain Historic Society. They'd like to install it in Ross Park. And I just wanted to see if the board would approve to have this free library installed. And she indicated to me that there may be the possibility of maybe three other free libraries being installed throughout the village as well.
What does it entail? Does she need as many as that or something?
So it's not, oh Benny, you know, it's wooden poles and stuff. And she's got a picture of it.
I see the picture.
I don't want to install it in the park, but I told her, I says, because I went to the library board meeting, and I told her that the electric department probably shouldn't install it because they know where the wires are and stuff like that. So, makes sense.
There's legs on it?
Yeah.
So it's not going to have to be, it doesn't get cemented into the ground?
Just freestanding.
It's going to be freestanding, yes.
Right. But also they want to put one, they got another one they're going to buy very shortly, and they're going to ask a guy up to the nursing home around there or the bed and breakfast. They want to put one probably there up that way on the town. So, I don't know where they're going to put the third one.
I would like to make a motion that we allow the library to put up the little free library in Ross Park.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Also, what I'd like to do is just to update the residents as far as for the Ross's Point Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan. And what I want to let everybody know is on July the 11th of 2022, I finally received the email from the Office of Planning and Development from New York State. And they have forwarded the documents so that the village can proceed to move forward with the smart comprehensive growth plan. What I have done is they've offered a course that they will go through step by step as far as the process that this is going to take. So since they put it on the table, I signed up for the course for myself and the mayor. And it's going to be on August the 3rd, so that we'll be prepared as far as moving forward. So I just want to let everybody know that we finally got it. It's been eight months into the workings to get this contract, but we finally have it.
Does any of the village board have to attend now?
No, right now it's just an organizational meeting, so we will know how to get things organized to move forward.
All right.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
That's everything I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The only thing I have is I need authorization for travel for the Administrator, Mr. Chris Latimore, and the Treasurer, Mr. R. Samuel Turno, to the New York State Conference of Mayors from September 12th to the 19th. I know it has the mayor's conference, but it's, in this case, it's for the treasurer and the administrator's training going on. There's very little for the mayor to do. So in this case, the best two people to go and to receive any type of training in this case would be the Administrator, Mr. Latimore, and the Treasurer, Mr. Turno. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but if there's no questions, then I need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve the authorization for travel. Second.
All those in favor of the travel?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The travel has been approved. That's all I have. Mr. Arnold, or Trustee Arnold, do you have anything?
I'd like to ask the Administrator on the job postings that we have out.
Yes, so as everybody knows, we currently have an opening for a line helper. We have an opening for crossing guard, a senior typist, and an MEO-2. At this point in time, we have received one application for the MEO-2 position. And I've received one application for the line helper. And that's where we stand at this point. The line helper application was submitted over civil service and that individual does not qualify. And for the MEO-2, I just need some additional information from that one individual to certify their qualifications for that position.
The line helper application, if I, they didn't qualify, is what you said?
They did not qualify for the position. So what's going to happen this week, there will be the posting for the recreational facility manager. That will be posted in the paper. There has not been any internal applications submitted to the Administrator at this point.
Anything else, Trustee Arnold?
Yes, the electric department is working up to the sewer plant on the dumping station. And they're also wiring up the new aerators that they have up there. And they're, in the meantime, once in a while, they cut some trees behind the fire station for the fire department to get off the, on the property line, which are pretty high and stuff like that, making that department. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Bernard?
The only thing I have this evening is I would like to thank the Civic Center crew for doing a very good job. The village looks great mowing the lawn, trimming everything up. Everything looks great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, I have a couple of things. We approved the purchase of the new pickup to Parker's. We need to make it official and put it in form of a motion. So I'd like to do that. I'd like to put it in the form of a motion that we purchase the new pickup for the street department, for the Public Works Supervisor, for the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and one cent.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of purchasing that truck?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the truck will be purchased. Anything else, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, I talked to Danny Gay today. He gave me three quotes for the pump, for that pumping station. And after talking with, with the Administrator, Mr. Latimore, it's a budgeted item and it was for five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents. So we really don't need more approval, though it was a budgeted item and he did give us three quotes. So, I just, I think he wanted to make it official to let us know where, you know, where the cost was. But it was within the budget of what he proposed.
Very good.
The last thing I have is we got the report from the auditors for the electric department. Now, I read quite a bit of this today, and I met with, with Will Freitag a couple of years in a row. And his biggest concern is with our electric department, we have to do one of the two things. We have to raise our rates to make more money, or we need to sell more power. I think we should be selling more power. Keep our rates where they are, and it's going to take a while for us to adjust our rates because that's something that we have to petition the PSC to do. So what I'd like the board to do is start thinking about is how we can sell more power. Like the mayor was saying with this rider A, so I think we need to get our legal counsel started on implementing that rider A. Now, the rider A, what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to see the village do is secure the hydro power for the residents and the small businesses. Any large industrial users come in, they go to rider A, they pay the full supplemental power. We can make more money and it doesn't affect, we won't have the high bills for the residents, for the small businesses through the year. So I'd just like the board to at least have their conversations amongst ourselves and with our administrator, and we get this ball rolling, because something has to be done sooner than later.
Right.
Well, I brought up rider A a couple of months ago. The big question the board was, we've got to change the law first. That's, that's correct. Because right now, on the books, it says there's no high-density load users. So that's why we need to implement it, because this is going to take a little while. We can do it in moratorium, I think. Right, Chris? We can do it in moratorium, but we still have to have public hearings, and this is going to take a while. So let's get it started now, sooner than later. And I'd like to get this ball rolling. How do you feel about that, Mr. Mayor?
I agree with you. And just to further explain to the residents, what Trustee Pelkey is trying to say, and it's not probably the best news that everybody wants to hear, but our electric rates haven't been raised since 1982. That's forty years. And the last eight to nine years, I'm going to have exact figures for the public soon, but we've been basically taking from our savings account and putting it in our checking account, that's to pay our electrical bill. We cannot continue to do that because our savings is dwindling. And pretty soon, we're not going to have anything to pay. We're not bringing in enough revenue to pay for our electric bill that we're being charged from our people. So at the end of the day, we've got to make a decision. Either we're going to have to sell more power, as Trustee Pelkey said, or we're going to have to raise the rates slightly. What should have been done, and I don't mean to criticize any of the past boards, but some of this should have been raised slightly, so it should have been done gradually over the last four decades, over the last forty years. That has been ignored. So it's going to be something we're going to have to do sooner than later, because like I said, we're not making any money, we're losing money, and we're having to borrow this money to pay for our power. And that's not a good thing to do. And so at the end of the day, we're going to have some discussions, this whole board to come up with some ideas. We have to do something sooner than later. And that's all I have to say on that, Mr. Trustee Pelkey.
Well, I think, I think a lot of it is, is like the operating cost. I mean, you know, it costs us to keep the doors open and the lights on ourselves. So I think if we do sell more power and do it the right way, we can...
But I also had privy to speak to the two auditors also. And they both indicated to me that over the last twenty years or so, they've indicated to various boards that, that this should have been done. Raise the rates slightly, not a lot, but slightly to keep up with the times. And whether it was for political reasons, to keep the rate low and the board to look shiny, that's what it was. But at the end of the day, we can't continue to operate like that. We're losing money. And if we continue to operate like this, we're going to be in the hole very quickly. So we're going to have to get together, the five of us, and come up with some ideas, either raise the rates or come up with some customers to sell our power to. But at the end of the day, this has to be addressed.
What it sounds like is when rider A was brought up a couple of months ago, we should have, we should have started talking to legal counsel about working all this stuff out because I'm halfway through this process right now.
Well, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have worked out because what was in the building would have not qualified. There's a difference between server farm and the Bitcoin operation. And when two CSR is building and repairing and testing these servers, what we had from RPNY was Bitcoin operation. And we can allow these companies to come in, but we have to have A, some type of rider A in place. We're going to have to sell these people a permit, a business's, a permit at a high cost, maybe fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, have this permit renewed every six months, every year, every two years, whatever we can come up with. And then the last thing we've got to do is have a security deposit from one of these companies coming into our village. So if they decide to get up and leave, we're not stuck with a huge power bill. We have a security deposit that's going to be in the village's name as well as this company's name. And that's to protect us, not to drive businesses away, but to protect us so we don't get stuck with a big, huge bill. And so that's all part of what rider A and the city of Plasberg have been doing. We're going to have to implement something along that line, but we have to do this sooner than later. Anything else, Trustee Pelkey?
No, that's it.
I just like to weigh in on this. Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we get our lawyer to start doing whatever we need to do to get this rider A on our, on our law.
Just, just to let the board know, the Administrator and I have discussed this a little bit with the attorney, Mr. Renee. And what we, we want to do is to get all of us together, along with the attorney, and put our heads together and come up with something. So we're all on the same page. So whatever information has to get out to the public, all five of us are putting out the same information and there's no confusion. And, and this is what we've got to do, and this is what we're planning to do. So, Trustee Bernard, you're right on point. This is what we need to do, discuss this sooner than later. Trustee Rodriguez was right. This, this thing should have not been just done three months ago, it should have been a year ago when the, the past mayor was here. When this 64 Maple Street first came into operation, this is when it should have started, but it fell onto my lap. Now we've got to deal with it. So we're going to deal with it. Anything else?
I'm good. I'm good.
Trustee Rodriguez?
I'm just happy that we can finally sit down and talk about this, get something in place. Go forward.
Thank you. Trustee Cooper, you'd like to stand, or Trustee Coop, Code Officer Cooper. That is from Oregio. Code Officer Cooper, do you have anything you want to say to the board?
No, the village is starting to look pretty good. And actually, my permits have picked up considerable. I'm finally, of course, the price of evidence caused our problems, but things have started to shape out a little bit more, really, really surprised. The last couple of weeks have been pretty good. The village is looking very good, if you guys have noticed.
No, I see that we have, we had a field cut by O'Reilly's Auto, which was good. We're working on things, that's what we want. The village residents need to see that their, the code officer in the village is doing something on their behalf, which is, we need to show that.
Well, we have a couple of pieces of property that are owned by people in, in the Georgia area down there, and I believe one in Florida, but I haven't, I sent them several, I haven't received anything yet. And of course, we don't want to have the village do that, we want to, we can't put down their taxes, I don't know what we're doing there, but we're doing the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I have one other thing. Or Mr. Cooper, there's somebody that's burning garbage up and finding you.
Right?
Yep. At night. Just to let you know.
Oh, I know most of the residents out there. I'll make phone calls in the morning and see what I can find out.
Anything else for, for Code Officer Cooper? Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody from the public would like to address the board? Stand, state your name for the record.
Patrick Hay in Fort Lakeview Avenue. Just a question in regards to the rider A. What's going to be the determining factor as to who's going to be required to get a rider A? What density load is going to be the, the factor that, all right, you have to be rider A, you don't have to be, like, what businesses around here are going to be required? What's the cutoff? Have we discussed that at all?
Well, you want to address that, Mr. Administrator?
That's one of the things that we're going to have to get clarification on, but it's primarily going to be based upon the power consumption and the type of business that they're going to be operating. So like, if you're going into, and I'll just point out 64 Maple, right now 64 Maple has a track record that it was using X amount of kilowatts of, or megas of power. So that, now that we know that, so a tenant comes, goes into that building, it's going to be underneath the assumption that they're going to be a high-load density, a user of electricity. The permit will be made out as such. There'll be a security deposit, there'll be the rider A, and that's what it will be based upon.
Are there currently any other businesses or residences that might be required to get a rider A? Is there anybody else that's taken a high load in this town besides that to dress?
The village is very level. The way, the way, we have three different customers. We have resident, residential, we have commercial, we have industrial. The rider A would be mostly the industrial.
Okay.
The big, large, commercial users that are unlimited on their power, income power, where most of the commercial properties, businesses, the residential, you're limited on what you have. We know what you can consume, so you can't go over. But these industrial customers have very large power lines that go into them, and they own their own transformers, and they can use as much power as they want.
Okay.
So that's where I think, on my behalf, the rider A should fit in.
Right.
As into the industrial customers, not the commercial or not the residential, unless they fall into this, this special high-density load.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify that, so some businesses would be concerned that they might have to get a rider A?
Oh, no, no, no.
So that way, it would just be...
Most of the businesses that are established now are pretty much grandfathered in, I would imagine. I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
And a lot of this will be identified by them filling out the permits. The, the businesses that were on, at 64 Maple Street did not fill out these permits. So nobody, including the ex-mayor, could tell me what was in that building. I asked him on several occasions. There was a permit filled out for a small office or a small manufacturing of servers. That was the only thing that was supposed to be in the building, and the only permit filled out. But it turns out that when we went in the building, there was three other businesses in there. So at the end of the day, these permits have to be filled out and accepted by the village, and that will identify what these high-density load businesses are, and that's where we're going to go. And that's where we're, we're not going to penalize everybody, but we're going to identify these people by these permits. If not, if they don't fill out a permit, they're not coming into the village, bottom line.
The other thing that we can actually look at as well, Pat, is we know in the summertime, the residents' usage is, what, five megs in the summertime, Brian? And we have thirteen point seven megs of power that's allowed into us through the hydro. We're not using that power. So if we could find somebody to come in and purchase that additional eight megs of power in our off-season, that's going to work out for everybody. So we'll sell them that, those eight megs. When we get into our peak demand for the residential, we'll cut their demand back because now our residence is going to be up to keep us so that we're not going to supplemental. So there's a lot of ways that you can work around it. And you can set it up so that if you do go, do go into that supplemental, then they're going to have to pay the rider A, that industrial customer. The ones that, that we don't want to get affected by any supplemental on the residents.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else for training?
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. I don't know.
So I do have one other report.
Oh, you have another report?
That, that I do need to mention to the board. And this is something that just took place this past week. John Bernard was over here, he was putting, hooking up the brine pumps, because we had the brine pumps off for, for the rink. And he had to rebuild both brine, brine pumps. Now, one brine pump is a 1972. I don't know how off, how much more of these pumps can be rebuilt, but we need to really consider about purchasing new brine pumps for the system. That's problem number one. Problem number two, while he was doing the install, John smelled the odor of ammonia in the facility. Well, our air exchanger has a leak, and the air exchanger, and that's the part that freezes the, the ice, needs to be replaced. It's going to cost a considerable amount of money. Considerable. These units are custom-built, so it's not like you can buy one off the shelf. At this point, we, I had Hogan's Refrigeration come up and take a look at it. They're going to check into what the cost of a new unit's going to be. John has been doing an inquiry where we may be able to rebuild this unit by putting all new tubing and everything into the unit, but both are going to cost considerable amount of money. This is something that the board needs to react on fairly quick, because if we don't have that chiller here by September, we're going to have a problem trying to get ice down. And these chillers may be six months out.
Everything's six months out.
Well, the bottom line is, if we don't get these things up and operating, we have no ice, we're going to lose every bit of revenue we have from the skating club, the hockey club, and everything else. So this is something that's pretty urgent to address.
Now, the, the situation at hand is if we can get a custom-built chiller made and make, made fairly quick, you're going to be over fifty thousand dollars. And that's with our Public Works people taking the unit out, getting it all prepped and everything. So that's going to save us some money, but you're still looking at over fifty thousand dollars. The problem that we have is because of the cost, it's going to have to go out the bin. If we can rebuild it, that can be classified as specialized, and we won't have to build, rebuild, or put it out the bin. So this board's going to have to make a decision rather quickly, I would say by the next meeting, which direction we need, we'd like to move forward with.
I think we ought to make a motion tonight.
But I don't know the cost, Danny.
Yeah, that's a problem.
I think Mr. Bernard needs to expedite to work the scope of the project here.
I think that's what we're doing.
That should be, we should have some numbers by the next meeting so we can get it approved.
And that's, that's what we're working on right now. Now, this is something that just happened on Thursday. So we're here, we're here right now with trying to hit the price. So we haven't had very long to work on this.
Well, and we, we also need, we need the price, but we need, okay, so if they do change all the coils in this old machine, we need to know how long, you know, we don't want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars in this old machine, and it'll last a year or two.
They're telling us it'll be just like brand new.
Once it changes all the coils and things like that. I think he's working with a company out of...
Down, down in New York City right now. The problem that we have, what we've learned, is this unit was installed in, what, what year was that chiller put in? Maybe the seventies, or was it updated when they did the break-in?
Eighties, oh.
In the eighties?
It was close to, no, it was in the seventies.
It, it, it's supposed to be cleaned every year, and it's never been cleaned.
The coil.
Something like that's easy. All you do is set up a regular maintenance schedule. I mean, that's something the rec center manager should be able to do very easily. But it leads us in, it leads us into another subject that, this is a perfect example that we need to start looking at when we do our budget, having money in reserve. We don't have any money in reserve for transformers, we don't have any money in reserve for the trucks, we don't have any money in reserve for the rec center. It's, it's one thing to keep our, our rate low in the village, but it doesn't make any sense when you're operating on bare bones and anything out of the ordinary happens, we're not financially prepared for this problem. So we're going to have... So we're going to have to look at the next budget. And unfortunately, we might have to raise the rate a little bit within our village. It's not because I want to, I live in this village too. But at the end of the day, it just makes sense to do something like this because a transformer's, Mr. Lachamore, million dollars, two million dollars, we have $100,000 in our fund somewhere of that nature. It's ridiculous. And our, and our newest transformer, Mr. Trustee Belkey, is how, how many years old?
I would say it's probably 2002, 10, 10, eight or 10.
So we're, we're looking, we're looking at at least 14 years.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and when's, when's the last time the truck for the sup- for the supervisor, the work crew or the electrical department has been changed? I mean, we're, I, I looked at these trucks and they're, they're rusty and, and we've been running on them and running on them. We have to start using some common sense and put some money in reserve because if we don't, our village is going to be in trouble. But we'll address that in the future. But I just want the residents to know, whatever we do, it's what is needed to be done and should have been done before. We're, we're, we need to address this sooner than later. Thank you. Anything else from any of the trustees? I don't think we have an executive session this evening. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing.
Oh?
Chris, if you, if you do get the quotes or whatever, we can call a special meeting too if we need to do it before next meeting.
We're, we're going to have to do something because, you know, without this rec center operating in the winter time, we're, we're in trouble.
You know, you can call a special meeting or whatever.
Yeah, we, we believe we will have to do that because time is of the essence here.
Yeah, well, definitely.
It really is. But it's better that it happened now
Yeah.
than after we had the ice down in the middle of the season. So I guess if there's a bright side of it, this is it.
Yeah, we still do have a couple of months.
Anything else?
All set? I make a motion we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.